I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, first start out our reorganizational meeting by administering the oath of office to newly reelected Board of Education member Kerry John. You're gonna have to raise your right hand and take this oath and you can read from here to here and then I'll have you sign it and I will witness it.
I Kerry J. John do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education member from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2025, according to the best of my ability.
Just bear with me because it gets in depth. Okay, election of officers and administration of oath of office after elections. I now declare nominations for President of the Board of Education open. Kerry John, Dale Colton. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations are now closed. Okay. We're gonna do a roll call vote for President and there's, there's Megan. Okay, so we have a roll call vote for President of the Board of Education.
Do you remember to unmute your microphones when you cast your vote?
I did already.
That Teresa Ray be voted for President of the Board of Education and a roll call vote is taken now on the nominee. Colton?
Aye.
Early? Freeze?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
McCune?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
And Sandy? Congratulations Teresa. We have, we'll declare nominations open for election of Vice President of the Board of Education. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? I now declare. You wanna, not. Nominations are now closed. We will vote as a roll call vote for Vice President. That Megan McCune be voted on for Vice President of the Board of Education, a roll call vote will be taken on the nominee at this time. Colton?
Aye.
Early?
Aye.
Freeze? John?
Aye.
McCune?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
And Sandy? Congratulations Megan. We will do the Board President, let me fill that in on our oath. Teresa, I'll have you take your oath. And we're down here, if you could read from here to here with your right hand up.
I say Ray do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education President according to the best of my abilities.
Okay, if you sign it. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Megan, would you like to take your oath over the Zoom and then I can have you sign it?
Sure.
Would you like me to say some words you could, you've.
That would be great.
Okay. Let's just, let me finish filling you in. Megan, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, say your name.
I, Megan McCune.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Board of Education Vice President.
The duties of Board of Education Vice President.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, and if I could get you to come in the office and sign it.
I will.
Thank you. Congratulations. I am now going to administer the oath of office, we'll do the Superintendent, then the Deputy Superintendent, and then the Assistant Superintendent. Mr. Breidenstein. And if you could, from here to here with your right hand up.
I Robert J. Breidenstein do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent of Schools according to the best of my abilities.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Beeler? There you are. Dr. Beeler, did you get my email with the, with the oath or I can say it and you can repeat it, whichever you prefer?
I have it right here.
Thank you, if I could get you to take your oath and then within the next couple of days, whenever you're in the office, I'll have you sign it.
I will. Thank you. I Mark D. Beeler do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Deputy Superintendent according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, thank you. And Karen Magiera, are you ready to take your oath?
Yep. I'm all set, ready?
Yes.
I Karen S. Magiera do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of, and the Constitution of the state of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Assistant Superintendent according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, congratulations. And at this time, Board of Education President Teresa Ray assumes leadership of the meeting and it is by 45. Thank you.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
I think we're all set.
Okay, then I need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Sue, second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Ian. Meg's thumbs up. All right, under item seven, our consideration of regular resolutions, item A. We need a motion to approve the consideration of regular, regular resolutions. Motion by Brad. Motion by Dale, or second by Dale, are there any questions on any of the resolutions? All right, we need, we've got a motion by Brad, second by Dale, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Meg's thumbs up, abstain, motion carried. I'd have made under our communications, we have our Capitol Project update phases one, two, and three.
I was getting that set up, I'd like to introduce Matt Sikora, Michelle Miller, and Julian Schnapp from Hunt, or excuse me, from Turner Construction, and I see that some of the folks from Hunt are also on the Zoom. So Turner will toss it to you.
That you've seen before, but something a little, oops, sorry, thank you. Something a little different and unique, I think, for what we've done is a before and after. So when we go through tonight, we're gonna show you a picture side by side of what the space looked like before this Capitol endeavor started and where we are with work that's completed and where we are today. And then Julian, Michelle, and I will talk about some of the things that are left to complete in some of those open areas. So we'll start out with phase one, the high school Seneca bus garage. When you look on the left, that's what it was like before, we really didn't have a good before picture, so pardon the winter and the snow and the mud. But the after is actually completed, we turn that over at the end of the year, the kids are in that space and there's some, some things that we're doing here from a phase one standpoint, Michelle, why don't you update where we are and what's left to do?
So looking at the steam addition here, and you've seen the front parking lot, which we'll view a little bit later, but that, this landscaping at the steam addition due to it finishing in December will be done this summer, as well as the blacktop you there, see there is not the top course. It will be installing the top, the contractor will be installing the top course over that. These contractors working on phase one, we're in financial closeout with them, you're getting down to the last few changes to review with them. It's 95% reviewed, excluding anything additional that could potentially come up. And we'll be moving into that final warranty phase with them and turning over paperwork for usage of the building.
So what Michelle had just mentioned there was the landscaping remains, I don't know if you guys have seen in our laydown yard out there, they have the big topsoil screener out there, so they're spreading that topsoil, getting all the loose stones and everything out of that to be able to spread that topsoil up back there this summer, just after finishing the paving work back there.
So we move on to the office addition, again, the before and after, you could tell it was kind of snowy when we took these pictures, but for those of you that walked in that side of the building tonight, obviously the office staff have been in there, hopefully there's rave reviews and they enjoy the space. But that's what that front entry looks like, and similar concepts here from a change standpoint, Michelle, I'd imagine since phase one, they're all the same. We're at the same point with these contractors on this, on this portion as well. Julian, how about from a punch list at the office addition? So quick before and after there. Multipurpose room, obviously we're done there, we're in it. And the space came out great, and from a before standpoint, again, this concept of doing the side by side came up a little late for us, but there isn't a true before, it's kind of in process, once we started, you could see the front entrance doors there and obviously you guys know what the space looks like. This was turned over. Punch list items left here, Julian? So I think this is the last piece to the phase one is the high school parking lot, again, obviously the before is not truly before, it's like before we started working, you see the light poles down. And then, thank you Salamanca's IT and tech group, the drone pictures have been absolutely great for us to help display what we're doing to not only the contractors, but I know you guys are getting some use out of it in your social media sites. So this one is not complete, I know we didn't park there tonight, there's a little bit of a mess out front, as you'd say, but the difference is if you were to drive around the front side, there's more concrete down the bottom. Right hand side of that picture, they poured some more concrete today and that work is ongoing, slated to be opened for school August 31st. Questions with phase one, where we are from a closeout standpoint, punch list, or work that was completed? Onto phase two, Prospect Elementary, this is where a lot of work is happening right now. The main office renovation, this should be a before and after, although it says current on there, that was completed, they're in the space. Julian, I think there's a punch list item we're still fussing with in there? And then, Michelle, from a change standpoint, this is still active.
It's taken place over the summer, so going into the summer, this project 50% complete, we could say. So we're not into that, we're trying to financially tie them up, close them out, get that paperwork and username, Mr. Rich. This would be at that point come the fall.
Library, everybody's hot on this space. I think, again, before, that truly is, after Rich got through there and took some of the stuff he wanted and put elsewhere in the district or in the maintenance shop, that's what that looked like in the main office, is if you were inside the old main office, what is now the library. So the picture here actually represents the point of view from a before and after. Interesting point to just note out, you know, the hallway doors are just to the left of the green soffit that you see on the bottom right. And then that expanse that runs off to the right where that yellow wall is, that used to be Gail's office, that's now blown out and is the computer room, library section that you see on the right side of the page there. Julian, we did some interesting things here from a pull plan session, why don't you talk about where we are in the field there?
We just wrapped up the above ceiling work, so we have the carpenters returning tomorrow to start dropping ceiling tile through the main body of the library space. Following that, they'll be able to freely install casework, so they're not fighting over that ceiling tile installation after, after the fact. So that'll be going on over the next week or so, followed by finished paint, putting in some devices to have that ready for you by the end of this month. There's another section just down the hall, small section, the hallway from the main library and computer area to the mechanical room where we just put a chiller in there, the door frame for that wall is coming tomorrow and they're gonna be installing that door frame, finishing some blockwork, and then the finishes will tail just about a week or so behind through that corridor piece, but the main body of that library where the reception desk is and most of the casework for stacking shelves is ready, end of July.
This is a piece, when Julian says the, the casework's next, it's actually sitting in the library, or excuse me, sitting in the gym waiting to go into the library. A unique piece with that library is the, the ceiling panels that are above that green arch soffit, they're triangular and they're colored. So this is the first time I think I've ever heard that the carpenters carry are actually gonna cut the holes for the lights for the electricians so that there isn't any waste of material, so unique piece there.
Um, a lot of the spaces, it was if, your school is out early, but we weren't sure the school is completely undead, we weren't able to gain the time on some of the spaces, you know, just when it's scheduled. This space, that corridor that they were saying you can't see here, that exits the library, we gained significant time there because we weren't gonna be able to do the structural renovations to support the chiller until afterwards.
Prospect in total, we're gonna flip through some of these slides, we talk about the kitchen addition next. The outside's done, the brick works up to the elevation of the roof line, the masons tore down their scaffolding. So this is what it looks like from the outside, the site fence is still up, Julian's gonna talk a little bit about that. But from an overall aspect, the mass of the structure is there, the shape of what you'll see as you look at before and afters is there, the, the drive work. Julian, you want to talk about the site work that's left to be done at the bus garage?
So with the, the shell of the addition being complete, next up, they're gonna be installing the grease interceptor for the, the kitchen equipment that sits just outside that area. Following that, they'll be able to progress the curb work and asphalt work that kind of creates that new kind of entrance up to that receiving area that you see just in the left hand side of that, that bottom right hand picture. So that, that work is scheduled through the end of the summer to get that work completed, but the shell of that addition is up and we are watertight.
So what's it look like inside? Again, this space changes daily, I think when I was over there today, there were eight to nine different workers in there, whether they were an electrician, a tin knocker, a plumber, a pipe fitter, tile setter, carpenter. So the left is after the kitchen equipment was cleared out and then the right is looking kind of towards the long end of the, the classroom fingers that run out towards the back of the property and right in front, it's kind of difficult to see, you see two red lines on that white line that runs vertically in the middle. That's the demising wall between the cooking space, what they call back of house in the food service industry, and then the serving line. Tile is probably five feet up that wall right now and they have a tile started, they're stringing through. Julian, why don't you go into detail with where we are from a construction standpoint inside?
So similar to the library space, we, we put together what we call a pull planning session to finalize our plan to hit that 8/31 date. One of the, the major milestones that we talked about in that meeting was starting flooring, the epoxy flooring in that space on 7/17, which is this Friday. So right just before this meeting, we had the flooring contractor over there looking at the existing, or the new topping slab we put in, making sure it, it's in good condition for them to start Friday and they confirmed their start for, for this Friday to do that, that epoxy floor. So that'll make that off limits to the rest of the trades for about a week or so and then the tile work will progress and our, our next milestone day is kitchen equipment coming in, starting eighth degree in that space.
It is difficult to see in that picture. And I know the folks on Zoom won't be able to see it, but the kitchen hood is installed here, oh, that's a touchscreen, sorry. The kitchen hood is installed there, it's just kind of dark in that picture and the cooler is coming. So that kitchen is really starting to take shape, I know there was some anguish over a date that was published for this space in the last update, but that has been addressed and there's contractor commitments, this will be done before the start of school. I think currently for us and Salamanca, one of the things that we'll need to move forward with that our team's preparing on is how Rich will go back through this building and get it ready for school. So we do have a plan of phase turnover for different wings and fingers of the building that Rich can get into and clean while the contractors are sequencing and finishing some other areas. Main entrance canopy, this is gonna be nice when you're waiting to be buzzed into the building and you don't have to get showered with raindrops anymore and you can actually stand outside undercover. It has taken significant shape, you can see the brick is done, the precast is on the columns. The terrazzo guy's got his stuff there set out there because he's using that as an access point to do the terrazzo in the corridor. So that's something you won't see in any of these pictures, is that that hallway that was created in front of the new office that connects, I'll say the big gym to the old gym or the cafeteria, is really taking shape. They've got the slooter strips, which is the dividing strips between color, laid down on the floor and you can begin to sense the pattern of what it's gonna look like, the colors have come together, the bases on the wall, so many people have walked through there and, you know, there was six feet of tile missing at the bottom, that's now installed and they're, they're turning that space over. Michelle, anything you want to add with phase two?
Like Matt was saying, we're all over the building, you know, Dale, before we were asked, talking about a meeting over there, maybe the next board meeting, but we are in every classroom and every space, so it's very important at the end of the month that, you know, we start turning spaces over to Rich to get them ready in time for school.
Lights underneath or is it a vent?
You're talking underneath the ceiling.
Yeah, like underneath.
I think you're seeing the bottom of the deck, are you talking about this right here? Yeah, you're seeing the bottom of the deck, there's a lid that gets installed in there, a finished ceiling, exterior ceiling. The EFS, right?
Stucco system approved and had a conversation during our PM meeting today. We're gonna do a small mockup to make sure that that stucco system resembles the existing stucco system just adjacent to that canopy when you look up from underneath there.
Yeah. Yes. Yep, those will be one of the, the things that get roughed in once they start that ceiling system. This one's a little difficult to see and I think what I want to call your attention to here is, if you look at the before and the current, there was an ambition and a plan to redo the sidewalks and entrances around the school. Obviously, if you look at the before, between the elementary fingers, there's trees and you really don't see much of a walkway. When you look on the lower right, you begin to see that gray line that takes shape, it's missing in between the middle because that was the last pick, the crane, we actually put a crane all the way in the, does this have a pointer? No, all the way into the center of that finger, right up four feet from the building to lift the mechanical units up there. We had to clear the office, Gail had to leave to make sure that it was safe to pick over where the occupied space was. But you can see compared to the left, there's a lot more mechanical equipment there that adds the air conditioning that everyone was so eager for, it's coming, it'll be a good building when it's done. And that's slated to complete end of August as well. So that's phase two. Any, any questions there before we go to phase three? September. Yeah, September, it'll be probably around that Labor Day mark. There is, and that's another thing, when I mentioned Rich and working with Rich and getting him back into the building, we will be reaching out to Gail and the people that are in charge of the library space, the kitchen space, they're gonna need some time to start acclimating, getting trained on what's there and just moving back in and being ready for school. So Seneca parking lot and high school, this one is, is rolling right along. We do have a good before picture thanks to the Salamanca drone. And then the after, or current, I should say, we are in the 14th, this was yesterday. It's striped, it's occupied, it's usable, and I think we've got some punch list items here, right Julian?
Issued by, by Hunt yesterday, so A&amp;F is gonna be out there working on those over the next week or so to get them handled. As far as the, the parking lot, as you could see out there, there's cars parked in there now, they were able to complete the striping over the weekend in between rainstorms that blew through here, so it was good to see that they were able to get that done and that parking lot is usable.
Oh, I'd have to check for a Kerry. Hunt, do you guys know? You're on mute if you're talking. We can get that information and get back to you Kerry, let you know how many there are.
I was just on, I was on mute, sorry, and I had to be unmuted by somebody else, this is Jeff. I don't have the count, but while we're in the meeting here, I think we can find out enough for you.
Oh yeah, I couldn't get on mute, what was the question, how many spots?
Yes Jake.
Okay, yeah, I'll double check that right now.
So as they check that, we'll move on to the roofing piece, this is one you can tangibly see the difference. The before, we highlighted the red area, what was needed to be done, and I think by this drone picture, you can really see how bad your roof was. If you look at that picture on the left before and inside those red boxes, you can see all the darker areas that's water sitting on the roof, saturated roof areas that have yet to dry, and you can see the rest of the space doesn't have that. In the lower right, you can see that a lot of the roof is laid up and I think they are actually ahead of where they should be, Julian and Michelle?
Over our, our entire replacement area has been torn off at this point, they completed that about a week ago. What we call Area A, which is the, the bottom of that right, bottom right hand. What we call Area A, which is the the bottom of that right bottom right hand photo, closest to the main parking lot, that's been laid up. And then building or Area B is the east wing of the high school. That's all been laid up as well. So they're currently working on detail work there. And they're laying up what we call Area C, which is the west wing of the high school now. If we keep getting the weather like we we've been having, they should be pretty close to wrapping up the roof layout portion in those areas by the end of this month. And they'll just be detailing and metal fascia work that carries towards the September eighteen date listed there.
Vets Park. We, uh, for those of you that could make it, um, we just toured that facility prior to this meeting. And a lot of work is happening over there. Very simply, the before, I think you guys knew what that looked like. Again, Salamanca drone. It's a beautiful thing because it does a lot of visualization for what we've accomplished as a as a group and is completed. The current, that's actually different from what you see right now. Um, there's that V shape that's at the end of the football field in front of the concession stand. That was left out originally for access for the Mason to get his lull in and put his work in place. That's since been completed and that stone runs all the way up to the concrete fence line, which is the Azad turf. There is significant milestones that are upcoming here. Julian, I don't know if you want to expand on them?
So one of the the first milestone that we're going to be hitting, which is a little bit earlier than we we had anticipated, was the the turf start date. So they're actually going to be starting out here reviewing the the installation by Lakeshore on Thursday and mobilizing on Friday to get crews out here Monday, starting to lay out the shock pad over that field and and start laying turf. So they said that it should be about a three week process to to lay up the the multipurpose field before they roll into the baseball field. The start date for turf, mid-August.
We kind of threw it out there on the walkthrough. I think we should just share with them. There may be the opportunity, if you have a sports team in the fall, that they could practice. Facility is not going to be done to house competition or have public events. But with the start of the turf early, one of the things that we may be able to realize with the weather state as well is that access to be given to them, they could walk over, not the team rooms, but just get over there, get on the field and maybe have a couple of practices. So more to come on that.
So some other significant milestones upcoming, the Musco sports lighting poles, those are slated to be installed, all thirteen of them. July twenty seventh and twenty eighth, if they need a third day, it'll be the twenty ninth. But by the end of this month, those are expected to be standing out there, um, all thirteen of them. And then lastly, your scoreboards, August third and fourth will be the baseball scoreboard. And then the following week, the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth will be the installation of the the big scoreboard for the multipurpose field with the video board, followed by the lacrosse scoreboards and and shot clocks over by the box, box lacrosse fields.
Board schedule on our next presentation, but we are saying to the group that's over there, a good time to walk and see that significant progress in these items Julian just spoke about would probably be the second week of August. So.
At this juncture, there isn't any further update regarding the custom color that was approved for the Center Field Warrior. That is still in process, but when A turf comes out, we'll be able to pull more out of them. Uh, but that is still taking shape. On our walkthrough before, there were some other things we're looking at uh from a perimeter standpoint. Teresa, I know you have some concerns over there, so we have some ideas. We have some options Bob has that he'll be getting with you. There is a some options. I was there today. I do, and I I think we can talk offline with uh some potential solutions for you versus what there's that there's now. Yes, Sue, that's that's part of it. Um, so any other questions with Vets Park or the roofing?
Just want to touch on one section. Um, we've had some conversations about the Broad Street entrance to the park, which the city still maintains. Uh, we've reached out. I want to thank Rich Pankowski for reaching out to Rob Carpenter and for the ongoing conversations that we have. There's some concerns about the paving entering that park. We do have a parking area in the front uh on the Broad Street side that we had kind of thought would be designated for handicap elder parking. Um, but the the bigger concern that has come up is with regarding some of the brickwork on the actual memorial structure. There's some concerns about safety. There's some concerns about some of the brick actually not being attached to the upper part of the memorial. So we've reached out to the city. Uh, it is the city's property um to try to facilitate some solutions uh to alert the city that there is a safety concern there that we have uh with that entrance to the park. So we're going to continue to workshop that and um we'll report back as soon as we can get all the parties together and identify what uh may need to be a solution.
From a Hunt standpoint, I don't know if you want to update the board where you are with the patio options that go north of the concession locker room, team room building?
Yeah, based on the conversations we had last finance meeting, um, just working through a couple sketches that give you a couple of options of expanding that. Um, and then we can come back and we should be able to get it to you in the next couple of days.
Any other questions with that or three point two? So the next piece is three point three and three point four. This is really in pre-construction and still the design phase. So at this juncture, we'd like to turn it over to Hunt and let them present to you where they are on that, those two parts. Jake, Jeff, Alan?
Yep. Um, so the three point three, I wonder if you can just move to the next slide.
Oh, okay, sorry. I didn't know I was driving.
So three point three is the main campus and high school alterations. So there isn't a lot of zoomed in work here. I just want to give kind of an overall of what's going on, just everyone's on the same page. Um, it's been a pretty odd design phase, you know, over the last, you know, few months. You know, trying to coordinate the district with everything's going on. We're currently in in the middle of that process right now. Um, we've kind of finalized the plans for like the office addition last week. Um, so we're still working through that. Um, but what this plan shows, this this page and the next one, um, is the general scope. So in red, it's pretty clear there. You can see that's the part renovation and addition for like a secure entry vestibule into a district office um that houses, you know, district office staff, CSC, um, you know, conference rooms and a secure entry. Um, that's what we're working on currently. The yellow, there's like bars of yellow kind of around the outside of this addition, around the school. That's part of the facade update. Um, so everywhere where that's shown is yellow, that's where that kind of teal metal panel exists. Um, that's being updated or placed along with some of the facade work includes some windows, um, some design work there. So kind of replacing some of the older cell windows reaching into their life um and updating the design at the same time. Be a bit harder to see, but there's like a light blue gray. Um, that's the freight elevator. There's currently, it's right kind of in the corner right by the cafeteria on the top left of this page. Um, the current freight elevator that's in that space is, I I believe it's from seventies. I believe it's still, it it's beyond its useful life at this point. That's part of this project to update that kind of in place, but with some newer equipment for Rich and his staff. And then if you can go to the next slide. This is the other half, um, the north or the western side of the school. The the yellow there again, the the areas of the facade update, which we're working through and working through, trying to get some kind of three D renders out. So just kind of get some general design discussions with the district and finalize all that currently. Um, the last piece there for in the building is, there's a green section on the top left portion there near the Seneca addition. That's a update to some classrooms that were originally um from the nineties, I think ninety one edition. They were done as science classrooms. There's no function for those currently. Um, so it's just updating some casework and a light freshen in those spaces to to work better with the program that they currently have. Um, that's, that's the overall building scope. Um, is there any questions regarding anything in or on the building before we move into the site work? So the next one, this just kind of gives a breakdown of the site alterations. I I I didn't want to just put a big kind of fuzzy site plan up there. It's hard to read. Um, I just want to give the general scope. Again, we're working through this currently right now with the design team and the district. The the main part is the athletics field. So the there's five new tennis courts um where they're associated fencing, lighting. Uh, those are going just outside um the main entrance, district office entrance currently where the staging area is. The existing track is getting resurfaced and adding two lanes to meet the sectional requirements. Uh, the interior of that field and the current track that's there currently, that's getting um really renovated to bring it up to kind of snuff where Vets Park is, getting turf. It'll be kind of a multi-use purpose field. New long jump and and discus, those are kind of being pulled out of the track. That older south track, the shape is thinner than the newer south track. So it's harder to, in order to fit the safety requirements of those pieces, um, those are being pulled out of the track and put adjacent to it. Um, that includes all the site fencing, you know, um, there's there's bleachers. There were still working through the district scoreboard, press box, um, some fire lane work, you know, to rise that and make sure we're self-coded and all the all the site lighting and sports lighting. Is there any questions on that overall scope as far as what's what the project fully entails or specific questions on any of those items?
Hey Jake, this is Matt with Turner. When will, I know we didn't put a drawing up here, but when will they see drawings that are, show the entire concept with the different parts and pieces all on one sheet?
We're still working through, I guess, we we've recently finished DB a couple of months ago and we've kind of gone back and forth the last month or two just on what's in, what's out. And we've added, you know, the press box and the bleachers we're still working through. At at the moment, it's just still currently being worked on as far as like what the bleacher options are and where they're where they're currently are. Plus, I think it was last week, there's some additional property that was acquired. So that's kind of shaking the bag up a little bit too, trying to work with the newer portions of the property and how we, you know, how we relate to that. Um, I would definitely say within the next couple of weeks, we're trying to finalize all this so we can continue to SDB. Um, I don't have an exact date. We're still kind of working through all those discussions we've just had.
Present from our side of the table, once Hunt finishes those, Michelle will lead the pre-con team through the pricing and that's the final costing of that work, destructibility review of those two scopes. Prospect, Alan? Alan, you with us? Jeff, uh, anyone from your team that can talk to Prospect?
Um, yeah, sorry, I I couldn't get unmuted, but I am now. This is Jeff. So, yep, so this is um the Prospect Classroom Edition. And uh, as far as, I'll start with status. One of the things that we're trying to do is when this project was um originally planned, we anticipated we could only receive aid for the STEM classroom. And we're um pursuing aid for the rest of the classrooms. Kind of a long shot, but we wanted to pursue that opportunity. So that that submission for them to calculate aid was sent in last week. And um they needed three or four days between that submission and our final submission. So the final submission will go in this week. And this is um, you know, a cleaned up drawing of what what it looks like. So here, off of this wing here, this what's your key plan there, the middle finger, the the middle wing, I should say, is the G wing is a classroom in the STEM um classroom addition. You can see that here. Go to the next slide if you can. And this, this is the H wing, the furthest to the right um wing of the building. And there's two classrooms, um, you know, pre-K classrooms being added on here. And you see the bathroom layouts and staff bathrooms and exiting out to the site here. So again, this is all fully designed and ready to be um finally submitted to SCD.
Questions on three point four?
Yeah, this is the rendering of the cafeteria. So the cafeteria renovation, existing, you know, auxiliary gym, if you will, is part of this project to um improve the finishes in there and the floor and, you know, have some activities identified on the floor system also. So that's in here too.
Floor going to be?
Excuse me?
Or going to be one material?
It's um a synthetic.
Jeff, would that be something similar or what is in the multipurpose room here?
The multipurpose room. If it's the same system or not, Jake.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, so it's like Prospect, but the the system that's in the multipurpose room now is a, it's actually a Robbins floor. It's like a, it's a, it's a, I can't remember the exact, it's basically used for indoor tracks, running tracks around gyms.
This would be very similar to that.
It's like a port athletic product, yes.
Yep. So I do have the the um parking lot counts, Carrie, that you had asked about. There's a total of seventy seven spots in that new parking lot at the Seneca entrance. And four of those are handicap spots.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In that cafeteria, are we getting new cafeteria tables?
Um, that's really kind of up to the district on the furniture purchases. There's not aid available for furniture for renovated space, but um, you know, if there's funds available, you can choose to utilize the funds for that.
All uh tables that are multicolored, those are staying. That was something that they, uh, the team in the building thought was still useful for them. Um, and I'm certain that we'll have some additional supplemental tables to spread the kids out, particularly because of what's happening now with the the reopening plans that are coming out. I'm sure that we'll have some additional spaces and tables in there to spread the kids out even more.
How old are those tables and wall?
I'd have to get back to you on that. Um, I think they're within ten years old. But I I'll double check that, but I I think they were purchased just before um I came.
Yeah, they were, they were upgraded about that time, I believe, too.
I was just curious about the wheels and rolling them over a brand new floor.
Uh, this this floor system can handle that, you know.
So that would conclude what we wanted to present tonight, a little before and after. And then giving an update of where three point three is, three point four. Obviously, we're in the summer crunch to get all the contractors pushed to the finish line. And whether we push them, they walk hand in hand, or we got to drag them, we're going to help get them there to deliver on the promises that are committed. That concludes our presentation tonight. Thank you.
Do I just turn this off?
So Levi is going to swap that out. And Levi, give me the thumbs up when you're ready and I can share my screen. Okay. Okay, so um, we okay to go to the next section, Mrs. Ray? Okay, so um what I'd like to do is take a a few minutes to provide an update on our Indian policy and procedures requirements. Uh, as folks may recall, we present multiple times on our Indian policy and procedures documents that allow us as an Indian land federally impacted district to collect impact aid. Um, historically, since two thousand and fourteen, we've approved the IPP at a reorganizational meeting. And then usually again in December, um, just as a a formal uh second look at the process. Every few years, uh, districts are selected for a field audit from the Department of Education in Washington DC. Every few years, districts are selected for a field audit from the Department of Education in Washington DC from the Impact Aid Office, and we were selected for a field audit this year. What I can say is that there are a number of new individuals in the Impact Aid Office due to some retirements of some long-serving veteran staff at the Impact Aid Office in Washington. And when that happens, there's a new set of fresh eyes looking at documents that have previously been approved. And that's exactly what happened with our IPP. In this particular domain, our IPP was put through a rubric. And the Department of Education received our submissions a few weeks ago. And they asked us to take a look at our IPP. They did provide us some technical assistance and guidance. And they did also provide us an exemplar which has been used as a model for the revisions to our IPP. The thought process to get this back to the Department of Education in Washington is to present this information tonight. Again, have it on the agenda for next week. And then if there are no concerns or questions from our community, then we would submit this document back to the Federal Department of Education by the end of July. And that would close our federal audit. So with that as kind of a backdrop, I'll give an overview of the IPP recommendations that are coming based on the rubric and based on guidance and the exemplar that was shared with us from Colorado. I've covered some of this. And I will note that the model that was presented to us was from Montezuma-Cortez School District in Colorado. Many of the elements that were included in their plan were already in our plan. Some of our elements were not in their plan that we thought were appropriate for our community will remain in our plan. But I did at least want to give a citation to Montezuma-Cortez School in Colorado for their willingness to share their document with the department and with us. Again, the IPP has six policies. These are governed by federal statute and law. These have not changed at all. And in layman's terms, these are how we implement and what we're required to do to disseminate information, provide opportunities for input by Indian parents, Indian children, and the Seneca Nation, annually assess equal participation for Indian children, how will we modify the IPP if requests come from our community, how the district will respond, and how we distribute documents. And I should note, in just the spirit of candor, I would prefer that we refer to the children as Native American children or indigenous children. However, we've been told and counseled many times by the department that the statute lists Indian children. I've asked every time I've gone to DC and met with congressional and senatorial folks to change that. But this has to comply with the standards in the statutes. So I apologize if it seems a bit less than we would normally be inclusive and sensitive to representing and identifying students of Native American heritage. That said, the field audit, I did seek some clarification with the education director, Mrs. Williams. I want to thank her for her guidance and her conversation. She is forwarding a letter to me. I have a draft, so I'm sure that it'll be here shortly. The IPP now includes a statement of preferred method of communication from the Seneca Nation. That primary method of communication is electronic, given the digital age. But it also includes written, print, and other communications to families, including when we distribute information, sending that information out to our families, and a way in which they can access that information. I've tried to highlight in my presentation some of the major changes other than some of the grammatical and wordsmithing recommendations from the audit. And again, the general consensus is a lot of the language remains fairly consistent. So what I've done on the slide here on the left-hand side, Policy 1, where it says prior, that's what our existing plan said. And you can see we listed dates and specific items in there. Those elements do come somewhere else in the document. But from the exemplar, the major revisions with this is the superintendent will disseminate the Impact Aid application, equal participation numbers in the IPPs to the Seneca Nation Education Department within five days. So once it's approved, then I will immediately turn it around and send it out to the Seneca Nation. We've been pretty consistent about doing that since 2014 when we were first approved. So that's not really a change. But what is a change, as I've highlighted and read, is the document access will also be electronic and a procedure provided in print for families to receive information. To be clear, all of our documents are posted on our website already and have already been on the website for a period of time. But the IPP did not reflect that that's where it was. So that was a major point, so that there was internal collaboration between our practice and our IPP. Policy 2, the prior, deals with how we will access and allow access for communication. And again, there's a fair amount of consistency here for individuals, Seneca Nation, education officials at the nation, parents of children or children themselves to share their views at the Indigenous Education Committee meetings and Board of Education meetings. And it's actually written in part of our public participation policy that this is a standing item on the Board of Education meeting. So that was pretty favorable to us and will remain in the existing document. We will provide clear notice of meetings. We do post them annually in our school district print calendar that goes out. But we will also make sure we have a concerted effort when we do have board meetings to also send out electronic communications as well as for Indigenous Ed Committee meetings and the IPP forums. And I'll get to those in a second. It does specify in the new document that electronic communications with families is the preferred method. And we will be utilizing our student management system to send those notifications out electronically to individual families as well as still using social media preferences. The one element that did get a slight tweak is that we now specify that we will annually present in July. So this will be an annual event, the reorganization meeting. And we'll also do the presentations and forums the first Thursday of November and the first Thursday of December. That is one of the elements that has changed. We have standardized the dates to try to be consistent. The forums will be Thursday in November and Thursday in December on that first Thursday of the month. And that's articulated in the written plan. In Policy 3, it deals with equal access and participation. And for a number of years, we have been tracking athletic and co-curriculars. And most recently, in the last two cycles, we've been tracking athletic, excuse me, academic enrollments. And we can do that with our new Power School system. It's quite easy. That is also published on our website. That is something that we have done for the last few cycles, but that wasn't necessarily articulated in the plan. What is new is that annually, we will summarize that participation data and start to drill down a little bit more through the Indigenous Ed Committee meetings about concerns that we have for participation rates. We have historically noted that in some of our upper-level college credit-bearing classes, the classes do seem a little bit skewed in some cases where there is not the participation rate that we would like with approximately 38% of our students being Native American. And in other instances, we know the participation rates are heavily skewed towards Native Americans and trying to make sure that we have a balance in those so that more students are taking those classes where there's an underrepresentation. We continue to encourage views for participation from multiple forums, IEC, Board of Ed Title 6, and of course, in parent or in written form from parents, students, or community members. And when there are gaps identified, we will work to find solutions. And those have been fairly consistent. Under the modifications of the IPP, prior iterations of the document, we would identify that within 30 days of the IPP being approved, we would forward it to the nation and then within 90 days to the Department of Education. We've streamlined that a little bit. That will be faster, as I noted, that it'll be within five days to submit the plans once they're approved. We will annually review the document and approve it by the Board of Education twice, once at the reorg meeting and once in the December meeting. I didn't put the December meeting dates because of the calendar. Sometimes we have one December meeting. This year, we will have two. So we'll just list it as the December board meeting. And I think that that will pass muster with the department. We will also add as a standing agenda item for Janet in doing the IEC agenda that we will do participation levels as a standing item through the IEC meetings. Those are scheduled for Thursdays, and we're still working on those dates. I believe it will be the second Thursday of the month, starting in August. We still continue to seek and revise procedures as needed. Any change to the IPP as a Board of Education responsibility. We seek input from the community, seek input from parents and students, and certainly the Seneca Nation. But the board has the final say on what is in or not in the IPP document. And then we redistribute the IPP. We post it on our website. We'll send it to the nation. We'll create a process where parents and families can access that information if they want a written printed copy. We'll develop a process where they can access that fairly easily and without a whole lot of concern. The last two are relatively pretty consistent. Every time we receive a response formally, and we've adopted, anytime we have a formal meeting, a Board of Ed meeting, an IEC meeting, or any other formal meeting that the district sponsors, essentially a standing board committee, then that will generate a written response if there is a specific request. And that's consistent, and that will happen. And the written responses are generally within a couple of days, but certainly within 30 days, depending upon the complexity of the request. What is new is that we have to track and log all of those requests. So it'll be important to have a real accurate accounting at the meeting minutes for the IEC. We keep track of the board minutes, and so that should not be a concern. But we will keep a running log of any comments that deal with participation or the IPP or programs or activities, particularly to deal with students who are Native American. And then we will annually summarize those communications. Last year, I think we received two written requests. Both were about food and nutrition. And those were addressed, and some meetings occurred between food service and the individuals that had some concerns about more indigenous offerings within the menu.
So can we also put it under, when there are questions and our response, put it under our board information?
Yes.
We can keep track of it that way, so everybody can see it.
Great idea. And lastly, the distribution of the policy. We always send it to the Office of the President every time we approve it. It's been twice annually since we've done that. That will continue. And we will, in the IPP, when we approve it in December and approve it in July again for 2021, we will keep a running record of the adoption and any revisions to the IPP. And I did load up a draft copy of that and did share that with the Seneca Nation. And so you can see those changes in the document. And again, the plan will be to present, kind of have an open mic for anyone that has concerns for this. We'll get a social media posting out this week, letting folks know that there are some revisions coming and that we would like to take their input. We'll do an all-call. And the hope is, if there are no changes or minor changes to the document, then we will approve it next week and then get it sent out to the Seneca Nation and then sent to the Department of Ed. That wraps up the field audit, and then they'll release, put us back in the queue for funding. So there is some financial incentive to do this. And I believe that concludes the major overview. And I can take any questions or respond to anything that you might have.
So right now, our funding is on hold?
Karen, I know you're there. Can you jump on that? It's not on hold. Go ahead. Let me unmute you. Hang on.
It's not on hold. They do a typical review for everyone, and the funding actually comes from the federal government in October. So we won't see the funds until October, November, December, anyway. So it's just a field review before they send us the next step, essentially.
Sure.
And I find it very offensive to comment on Indian policy in the beginning. I don't know why, I'm quite bitter, but I can't change it as Seneca Nation policy or the Indian policy, because that's who you're dealing with, the Seneca Nation, correct?
Yes, I agree 100%. Every time I'm down to DC, which is generally two or three times a year, lobbying and meeting with the federal officials, I've asked that same question. The response that I receive from them is, these are the statutes. This is how it is written. We did originally, in doing the document for the Impact Aid, refer to our population as Native American students, Native American families. And our document was denied, essentially, and said, you need to follow the written word of the statute. So I agree that it is not reflective of how we refer to our community. It's certainly not the preference that I would have in referencing the students or the families.
How can you advocate to have exchanges at Indian policy, whatever? Because we're not like anybody else. You know we're not. Everybody in this group knows we're not like all the nation.
Yeah, I agree with you 100%.
My case is for advocating for that change.
You know, we're gonna try to keep advocating and maybe we can get together with all the schools and...
What do you need to get a change?
We have to keep lobbying, probably.
I would say what we need is critical mass. When we first entered into this funding stream and having this opportunity for a federal designation, we were the only district in all of New York State that was recognized as a federally impacted Indian land district in all of New York State. There are now six. And there are others that we're trying to bring in and advocacy, that we know that there is power in numbers. And when we go down to Washington DC and other school districts come down and they agree with us, whether they're affiliated with the Seneca Nation or the Tuscaloas or the Qugas or anywhere else throughout New York State, they share that same message. This isn't the same, I can say from talking with other districts across New York State that are federally impacted, but also other districts across the country that are impacted. There are other parts of the country that would prefer that it be listed as Indian. So there's an internal conflict of the, some 600 districts that are designated as Indian land districts through the Impact Aid Office.
I think that's going on in the world right now with the Black Lives Matter. Well, you know what? It's not just Black Lives Matter, it's all Black Lives Matter. Chinese, Japanese, you know, English, whatever, whatever nationality it is, they all matter.
One of the biggest problems that we're not even talking about is that it's on the federal level. This isn't anything as a district that we can change. This isn't anything that New York State can change, because everything on the federal level refers to Indian. The Bureau of Indian Affairs, Indian Health Services. Everything that the federal government refers to indigenous people as Indian. It's changing the entire federal government and the way that they designate our indigenous people. It's not this district that can make this change. It is millions of, it is literally millions of people voicing that concern.
I think too, and I'm sorry, because I can't see, you know, everyone there. But I think internally, you know, what might help too, because language does matter, is that I know that our official documents have to be, you know, in line with what the federal government says. But the language that we, Gloria, hold on, my daughter has found a spider and wants to share it with me right now. So the language that we use internally, though, I think we can use indigenous. We can just put an asterisk next to it, that everything that goes to the federal government obviously has to use the term Indian. But the words that we use to talk about this, I think it's very easy to make that switch, you know, over. That's what I would suggest doing.
That's a good solution.
And one of the things that we already did do, and it was at Dr. McEwen's suggestion, we changed the designation of our committee meeting. It was Indian Education Committee, and I believe a year and a half ago, we changed it to Indigenous Education Committee. That's just one of the things we could do locally. But changing it on the federal level, that's a much larger discussion with a much larger group.
I would say if there's any...
Within New York State, and New York College, South State, with its own...
Well, what I can share with you is that for the Impact Aid program, I'm the... the state chairperson for all of New York State. That includes both Indigenous held districts. It includes military districts. It includes federal properties where there's low income housing, where there's embassies in New York City, or federal parks. So I'm the state chairperson, and that's relatively new. And that, I appreciate the Board allowing that to occur because that puts me at a different tier with the other 50 states. And what I can tell you is that there are Indigenous impacted districts throughout all of the 50 states and all of the territories. That's a powerful coalition of individuals that share a similar history of their, particularly with the Indigenous held districts and the military districts. And this is one of the reasons why there's bipartisan support for this program, because it's military, it's federal, it's parks, and it's Indigenous lands. So this is one of the few instances where the federal government actually stays out of its own way. They could give us more money and they could provide more funds for us. That would be great. But this is one of those bipartisan collaborative efforts on a federal level. And we want to try to leverage that and we want to try to use that cooperation of both sides of the aisles to push this forward. So I can promise you that I will continue to push that forward. I know I can contact the other six, other five districts that are similar to us in this category, and I know that I can contact at least the other Indigenous communities across the country through the National Indian Impacted Schools Association, which, again, that'll be a conversation I'll bring up to Brent Gish, the director. Maybe that should be changed. So those are great comments. I will follow up with Congressman Reed, who's been a great advocate for this program for us, as well as Senator Schumer and Senator Gillibrand, who are also equally strong advocates for this program for us and for the district. I thank you for bringing that forward. I appreciate it very much.
I don't know if anybody from the nation's on. Is Tracy? Okay, then. I guess we'll move along to Board of Education message. Brad, do you want to start?
Congratulations to Teresa, Meg, and Karen, and their new opponents.
Congratulations, lovely this year. I have not been here because I didn't get a lot of things I normally do, but I think I'm going to go for it and.
Thank you.
I don't get out much these days, so I really don't have any news.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
You want me to say now?
Sure.
One of the triplets has graduated to a regular bed. He's out of the NICU. They're, they're a week old. We'd have to build a new classroom if they lived in Salamaca.
We're on it. We are willing to do that. Carrie? Oh, well, I was going to go this way around, back up.
Yeah. First of all, I wanted to, again, thank everybody who expressed their confidence in me to elect me to another five-year term on the Board. Pretty proud of this. Another five years of hoping to help improve this district and our educational opportunities for our kids. And again, thank you. Yeah. Graduation, Sue. That was a, it was a beautiful event, beautiful venue. And I got to say, it's a source of pride for me because I was in my previous role as Owners Representative for the Seneca Nation. That was a project mine that I spent a good three years of my life working to develop and then oversee the construction of it. So to see the combination of my school board role and my previous career opportunity role combined, it was pretty special. I was, I was very proud as I sat there and watched the event, and it was great. I think, I think all the kids had a great time. I think they really appreciated the fact that we went out of our way to try to make a live graduation happen for them. So it was pretty special. It was pretty awesome. Another thing, I just, I got, I got, I was plug this. Kids, kids are out of school, but learning doesn't stop. You know, we, we have to make sure that parents are doing what they can to help their children learn over the summer. We have no idea when they're coming back. We have no idea what learning is going to look like yet. But again, pick up a book, read a book, look at an online learning program, do anything and everything you can to work with your kids over the summer. It's important. It's, you can't stress it enough and it can't be, you can't be told enough to kind of make that the normal. It's so weird how often we can pick up our cell phone and just look at whatever we want as far as social media, internet, whatever, but how often do we pick up that book? How much time do we spend on working with our kids for online learning? It's, it's important and I can't stress it enough. So just hope everybody does their little part and makes our district a little better with every effort you can put in. That's it.
I'd also like to say, congrats to, to Teresa and Meg for their reappointment to the, the leadership positions on the Board and to, to Carrie for his reelection. Congratulations. I also enjoyed graduation. It was, it was a great, great venue, great ceremony. I really enjoyed myself. Thanks.
This time.
Did you say me? Okay, sorry. It kind of, the audio came in and out there. I would like to first just thank Rob Miller and all the people in IT. This has been the best board meeting so far in terms of audio for those of us that are on the, the distance end of it. Really, really clear audio, very excited about that. So appreciate everyone who, who works behind the scenes on this. We have a really great IT department in general, but all of you have really risen to the occasion, you know, with, with COVID. And Levi too, with social media and everything. I just am continually impressed, you know, by, by our staff. And then I'd like to thank the Board for electing me and Teresa again to serve in a leadership position. I'm really looking forward to seeing all of you face to face again. I have been, you know, with a very vulnerable population recently, basically an infant, but soon I will, I will be back with you all face to face. And thank you for, for having that confidence in, in my leadership again.
I'd also like to thank the Board for reelecting me as president. It really makes me feel good that you still have that continued faith in me. So I appreciate it. As Meg said, you know, the technology that we have is, is really great. I can't tell you how many of my family members watched graduation and said, you know, how wonderful it was. Not just that, you know, they could watch it, but that we had it, you know, where other districts were doing drive-throughs, going in your car, handing a diploma, doing 10 at a time, doing six at a time. You know, we actually had a well thought out plan in a beautiful location, which Carrie oversaw, which was awesome, that everybody I've talked to is very envious of. And believe me, I keep bragging about how wonderful it was and how fortunate we were. So I just wanted to, to say that. Congratulations again to Carrie. He's always brings up that point that it seems like I always forget, and it's always good to have somebody that thinks outside the box and totally different sometimes than the way I do. That's what I think makes our whole Board great, is that everybody has their own opinion and they're not afraid to share it. And we all really come to the consensus of what's best for the community. So I look forward to working with everybody. I'm on for the next four years, so I, I'm excited about working with everyone because I think we're going to continue to make the district grow. And I'm really proud of what we did. And I'm really excited to work with Meg again because she's a great VP and always has my back when I'm not around. So thank you again to everybody. Who do we have next? Central Office, Karen? Is Karen around?
I am, but I don't really have anything. Par for the course, I guess. Just continuing to move along.
Quarantining safely?
Yes. Working from home.
How much longer are you quarantined for?
Till Friday. I can come back on Monday.
Oh, okay. That's good.
Yes.
How about Mark? Does Mark have anything for us?
Sure. I would also like to echo the sentiments of congratulations to our school board leaders and reelected school board member Carrie. I think it's important to know that one of the hallmarks of a successful organization is consistent leadership, and that starts with our school board. And that is very important to ensure that we follow and are consistent with where we're headed. So that's a great thing to see. There's an awful lot of information that has been disseminated from the state and Department of Health over the past 24 to 36 hours. I'm sure Mr. Bridenstine will be discussing that, but I just want to confirm.
Can I ask you to speak up a little bit? You're fading in and out.
Sure. Absolutely.
First time ever.
Yeah. I also just want to acknowledge that there has been an awful lot of information that's been shared by the Governor's Office, the New York State Education Department, as well as the Department of Health regarding reopening. I'm sure Mr. Bridenstine will be addressing that when he speaks in a few moments, but I do want to make sure that all of those who are listening and all of our parents and students and staff members realize that over the next week, we will be gathering a significant amount of input, compiling that information with the guidance that has been provided to us to ensure that we have options, particularly for our students and parents when we reopen schools. So there will be requests for additional information and input from all of those stakeholders, but this is going to be a relatively complex process with several contingencies that need to be put in place. But we will ensure that we have a very safe and solid plan so that we can continue with the education of our students come September. Thank you.
And we'll turn it over to Bob.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations to our returning Board Member, Mr. John, and to our returning Board Officers. So I'm just going to dive right in. It has been a whirlwind 24 hours since the State Department, State Education Department and the Department of Health and Governor Cuomo dropped the quote unquote guidance to school districts on reopening. Administratively, what I can tell you is we are reviewing these documents that dropped yesterday. I've shared them with staff and have asked them to reach out specifically after they take a look at the plans for reopening and talk directly with their building principals. I know the building principals are in regular conversation with our staff. We've had some individual meetings with some of our leaders, both teacher, administrative, and civil service leaders, on concerns that we have. And I can assure you that the concerns we have are the same concerns that every school district in New York State has about reopening. I do think that I can share a few things with the Board and the community tonight that I think are, are pretty consistent and I can safely say will happen. Unfortunately, the first one is that the August welcome back picnics will need to be postponed. Out of an abundance of safety and concern, when we had several hundred individuals, parents, children, community members, staff members in a small confined space at both of our campuses, I just don't think it would be safe or prudent to have those. So we're going to postpone those and we will revisit those. I think that's an important aspect of mental health and getting back to familiarity that is important for us. So we're going to put that in a different pile, but we are going to circle back to it. I can say for the Board's benefit and the community's benefit that we will have some form of in-person instruction and digital learning that will occur in September. I know personally, families have contacted me to share their concerns. Some have said, we got to get back, and others have said, we're not sending our child back just yet. And so whatever our ultimate plan will look like by the end of this month, it will include a hybrid model. I think we can safely say that. We do know that Food Service will continue for our students, both in person, for those students that are here, as well as remotely for students that are not here. That was very clear in the guidance. We know that masks will be the norm, particularly in instances where we cannot safely socially distance, but there was some bright spots that if we can socially distance or use barriers, that we can have students not, and staff not be in masks all day long. That was positive and helpful. And so we're exploring and investigating the spaces that we have, the time in which we will have students, and the physical structures that we will either need to secure or already have in place so that we can have socially distanced instruction without masks, to the extent that we can do it safely. We do know that transportation is going to look very differently. And so I'll say this first, and I'll probably say it again and again, for students that need transportation, we will be there for you. I just don't know today what that's going to look like. And for those parents and families where transportation isn't a concern, in the guidance documents, they specifically indicated that students should walk to school or be driven by their parents, to the extent possible. I did ask on one of the statewide calls if parental transportation would be aidable, if we could submit for aid on that. That wasn't denied, so that's at least still something that we can pursue. We know with other programs that the state or county sponsors parental reimbursement for mileage is allowable, so there is a mechanism for that. So we'll continue to pursue that. But transportation will look differently to make sure our kids are safe and our drivers are safe, who predominantly are in and at-risk population because of their age, for the most part. And that's common across New York State. We will be looking at using our larger common spaces, like the multipurpose room, like the gym, like the music and band suites, and the LGI for spaces that are a little bit larger where we can have students spread out in a socially distant way so they don't need to have their masks on. At least that's the cursor read of the guidance document. We will be required to do entry screenings for anyone that comes into the building. That includes temperature, symptoms, cross exposure to other individuals who may have come into contact with the virus or who are quarantining. And we're working through some IT solutions with that. We're currently piloting an online portal that allows all of the staff to self-monitor their temperature and their symptoms. That goes right to a single point of accountability within the district and our Safety Director, and then we can see who is a concern or at a risk. And if they are a concern or a risk, they will not be allowed into the buildings. We do know that some families will elect to stay home and some will be in school, and we're going to work with the building principals and staff and working on that scheduling. In talking with many other districts, it does seem to be that an A/B type schedule, an alternating schedule is, is kind of where a lot of districts are settling right now. That doesn't mean that's what we'll do, but that's, seems to be the most popular initial conversation. I have not heard any district say they're going totally remote and not doing anything. Number one, I don't think anybody wants that. And number two, the guidance says we should pursue in-person learning as part of our, our multitude of plans. I've asked staff to review the documents and reach out to their families, and we will be reaching out to the community, as I had indicated last week, for their concerns. We've done that previously. We think we've got a pretty good start on some parental concerns. And the last thing I'll say about COVID, I think, is what we still need from the state is guidance on what the template for the plan will look like. There is great concern in the administrative field that we will put together wonderful plans to keep our students and staff and community safe, and the state will give us a different format. We know that that happened initially in this, and we're hoping, because of the timing, to not have to duplicate efforts. So there's a lot that's going to happen. There's a meeting tomorrow at BOSI's where we're coming together regionally to talk about our concerns, and I'll continue to report. The last thing I think that I will say does kind of deal with COVID, but we had a wonderful workshop this morning that BOSI sponsored. Pam Kirkwood and Dina Allen from BOSI's ran a seminar about dealing with COVID in the workplace. We worked through a multitude of scenarios about what happens for staff if they have concerns. A diagnosis, a quarantine, a concern about their physical safety and well-being. It's one of the best workshops I've attended in a really long time because it gave us meaningful solutions to real-life circumstances that are going to land on our doorstep real soon. It was very helpful. I want to thank the BOSI staff for running that. And there is a Tuesday talk cycle. Next week, it's on a different topic, I believe, sexual harassment. Next week, it's on a different topic, I believe, sexual harassment or Title IX, excuse me, Title IX. So I don't think I'll participate in that, but if the talks are as good as they were today, I would encourage our administrators who've got the link to also sign up for some of them. So a lot of work is going to happen. I did tell Teresa over the weekend, and again yesterday, if there's really something urgent that the board needs, and you contact us or the district, and we don't get back to you, we're not ignoring you, but we're probably knee-deep in COVID. So if there is something that's urgent, just pick up the phone and call us. If it's not urgent, we'd ask if you can kind of hold on that to let us get through this week, because the next 10 days, I think, is going to be a real challenge because we have about 14 days to do this.
We do have to provide masks for the students and staff every day, whether the staff gets five and that's all they need, but I would anticipate needing a new mask for every kid every day. So we also have to try to secure the personal protective equipment, too.
You'll just have to keep us up to date.
We will.
As soon as you know.
Yep.
So we can get it out there.
I might recommend that the safety committee got involved with this, could have meetings. I don't know if Kerry, you're on the meeting. We're here on the safety committee, right? I mean, I'd be one to meet every day if we had to. I don't know. Once a week or throughout the whole process, not just coming up with a plan.
The safety committee, I can tell you. Mark chairs the safety committee, so I think they're probably going to meet ASAP, right, Mark?
Of course.
I should say Ray Halli is really fantastic with all this stuff. His logistical expertise is superior to anything I've seen ever.
What I would suggest is to, if you can give us that contact information tonight, I can make sure Mrs. Dudak, our Director of Pupil Services, reaches out and make sure that there can be a contact and make sure that everyone gets exactly what they need. Good point about the safety committee. I think that fits perfectly, and Kerry's got tons of experience with COVID, don't you, Kerry?
It doesn't sound good.
It wasn't in his campaign slogan, but... We have anything else that we want to? Anyone wants to add? Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Dale, second by Sue. Are there any questions on anything on the consent agenda? Then all in favor? Aye. Thumbs up by Meg. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carried. And under old business, we have our school calendar that's been amended. Do you have any comments, Bob, or anything you want to say about it?
We need that the welcome-back picnics will be rescheduled.
Okay.
They will not occur in August.
Then we need a motion to approve the amended school calendar. Motion by Sue, second by Brad. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Bob, do you want to just go over the changes to it again? Other than the picnics? So we did the calendar several months ago, right as COVID was just starting. We had identified a number of dates that we thought could be flexible days, and maybe we wanted to start those days again. One of those days was the four-day weekend at Labor Day. We pulled that in talking with a number of folks that thought to come back after such an extended and then go right into a long holiday weekend would be a little disjointed. So that was one of the days that we pulled, that was listed, that brought us below the minimum number of contractual days. We also pulled back August 1st, which was an additional day that we thought we might want to do. That day came back, and then a four-day weekend at Memorial Day was also pulled back. Historically, what we can do if we've had extra days in the calendar because we don't use snow days, then we have, in some years, added that Memorial Day back. But Election Day, for a lot of health and safety reasons, is still a non-attendance, non-workday for staff. Students won't be here, and it won't be a professional development day.
Okay. Any other questions? Then we have a motion by Sue, second by Brad. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carried. And our tuition rates for the 2021 year, we need a motion to approve our tuition rates. Motion by Dale. Second by Brad. Are there any questions on the tuition rates? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thumbs up by Meg. Motion carried. And our income eligibility guidelines, we need a motion to approve the income eligibility rates. Motion by Kerry. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Yeah. Karen, this is probably for you. Can you give us just a brief rundown of this again?
Yeah. The reason that we have to do that is that if anyone gets a second lunch, or it's also the adult prices being set as well. So if a child gets a second lunch or a second breakfast, they have to pay for it, but the first one is still completely covered under community eligibility forever, student.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Then we have a motion by Kerry, second by Dale. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thumbs up by Meg. Motion carried. And our Board of Education standing committees, so we need a motion to approve the standing committees.
Motion.
Motion by Kerry. Second by Brad. Are there any questions on any of the committees? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thumbs up by Meg. Motion carried. And our facility usage, so we need a motion to approve our facilities' usage. Motion by Sue. Second by Dale. Are there any questions?
Question, comment? This is the current structure that we have. We will likely need to revisit this when the car opens.
Understood. Okay. We have a motion by Sue, second by Dale. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thumbs up by Meg. Motion carried. And our UPC contract, we need a motion to approve the contract. Motion by Brad. Second by Dale. Are there any questions on this contract? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thumbs up by Meg. Motion carried. And we are going to abolish a full-time social studies teacher, and we are going to create a full-time elementary teacher, so we need a motion to abolish and reclassify these positions. Motion by Brad. Second by Sue. Are there any questions?
Yeah. An explanation on what we're doing here, please, Bob.
The last board meeting, there was some questions about the various positions that were approved. So we went back and we did a pretty thorough dive with each building staff, each building principal, and looked at the staff that they had, the positions that were in the budget for last year, the positions that were carried over into the budget for 2021, and we found that we actually had a social studies position that was not filled and that was not needed. And I believe Mr. John had asked about a particular teacher, we'll call her AK, in that position, and Mr. John was right, that that position was not quite paperwork compliant with what we had thought it was going to be. So this takes a vacant position that we don't need, social studies, and fills it with an elementary position that we need for class sizes and enrollment, so. And I believe we've got all, and Karen, you can nod or thumbs up, that we've got all the bodies accounted for and aligned.
And we did go through this in personnel, too. Okay. So we have a motion by Brad, second by Sue. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thumbs up by Meg. Motion carried. And then we need a motion to approve our STA MOA. Motion by Kerry. Second by Dale. Are there any questions?
Yeah. Bob, can you give us a rundown on this?
Absolutely. So let me go back to 2014. The teacher's contract expired. We took a little bit, a lot longer than we wanted to, to get it ratified, and then we had made a verbal commitment to the Teachers Association that there were some things in that contract that we wanted to revisit. Athletics was one of them, and the salary schedule, we did that the following year. And then the board was very pleased with the direction that the district had taken, and the board authorized the administrative team to go back to the teachers, and that's how we got the welcome-back picnics. We had some more conversations. We added a mid-contract increase, and that went well. We realized about a year or so ago, a year ago last June, that our teacher assistance schedule was still not valuing our teacher assistance to the level that the work they were doing. So the board, last June of 19, authorized us to provide an extra incentive, an extra salary boost to our teachers' assistant for the remainder of the contract, and we agreed that we would come back in June of 2020 and revisit the final year of the schedule. This brings it up and gives the teacher assistance a significant boost from the old contract to the current contract, off-step teacher assistance. Karen, what is that number? I don't have it directly in front of me.
I don't either.
Okay. All right. I believe the off-step teacher assistance will make 8%, so that's any teacher with beyond step 12, 13 to, I think, 30-something that we may have. And there was an increase for each of the steps. And that was discussed with the Teachers Association representatives in, I believe, early June, and then it's now presented to the board for ratification.
So it's going to reach for their impact. They still get a raise.
Correct.
Once they get off-step, then they move to an 8% raise.
Yes. And their contract as an association expires in June of 2020, sorry, June of 2021, and I'm sure during the course of this late winter, early spring, we'll be starting negotiations with them on a successor agreement.
Thank you, Bob.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions? Then we have a motion by Kerry, second by Dale. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thumbs up by Meg. Motion carried. And then we are item H, closing the Class of 2020 bank account, so we need a motion to approve the dormant bank account. Motion by Sue. Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thumbs up by Meg. Motion carried. And item I is our resolution for the city in Cataragius County adopting post-issuance compliance procedures, so we need a motion to approve the post-issuance compliance procedures. Oh, gosh, please. Motion by Dale. Second by anyone? Sue? Are there any? Are there any questions on this? All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thumbs up by Meg. Motion carried. And our change orders and allowances, dispersments, authorizations. One of my favorites. Need a motion to approve the change orders and allowances, dispersments? Motion by Brad. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thumbs up by Meg. Motion carried. And item 12 is our personnel consent agenda. So hopefully, everybody reviewed it. We need to go to item B to approve the personnel consent agenda. Need a motion, please. Motion by Sue.
Second.
Second by Kerry. Are there any questions on any of the items? There are a lot. All right.
I was going to ask Bob to review every single one of them.
I was waiting for it, Kerry. Okay, we have a motion by Sue, second by Kerry. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thumbs up by Meg. Motion carried. Do we have any?
There are a few here. One in particulars to our, at our tech table, Levi Spooner, who we, he scored at the top of his class in the website operator civil service test that has been long awaited, so we are delighted to put that civil service obstacle course behind us, and welcome, Levi. There are a number of our folks on the Zoom call that have stepped up to serve as coordinators and grade-level leaders. We could not do the types of services that we do without our staff stepping forward and serving in those other extracurricular ancillary roles that are so important to our kids. So at risk of leaving anyone out, I'll just say to all of our staff, both civil service, administrative, and teaching staff, thank you for making our students have robust opportunities in our district at a time when other districts are looking at cutting.
Congratulations, everyone. And thank you. Okay. We have, I don't know what item it is.
Item D.
Item D. We need a motion to approve the co-curricular duty appointments. Is that right? Am I missing a page? That's right.
Wait, wait. Can we stop?
Sure. Sure. It's the supervisors, chaperones, ticket takers, timekeepers, scorekeepers, attention monitors, blockkeepers.
1T9, Janet.
Volunteers, monitors, supervisors, regions review, extended day enrichment. You want me to go on? Did I stall enough? Okay. All righty. Thank you. So we need a motion to approve all the co-curricular duty appointments. Motion by Dale. Second by Kerry. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thumbs up by Meg. Motion carried. And item 13 is our board information reports, and we do have a couple thank-yous. I know there's one from...
So the first is from a student from the Class of 2020, Emma Fisk, Salamanca Board of Education. "Thank you so much for awarding me the Salamanca Academic Booster Club Senior Scholarship. I am honored that you thought of me, and I really appreciate it. Your generosity relieves some of the financial stress of college, and that will help me succeed in my future. I am very grateful you chose me. Sincerely, Emma Fisk, Class of 2020." The second, thank you letter. The second thank you letter is from Chancellor Betty Rosa, Chancellor of the Board of Regents, New York State Education Department. "Dear Mr. Bridenstine, on behalf of the Board of Regents and interim Commissioner Tahoe, I am writing to thank you for your participating in our recently concluded Task Force on Reopening Schools. When we decided to move forward with the Task Force, it became immediately clear that we needed to hear from as many diverse voices as possible from every part of the state, and we knew that we needed to have the right experts and stakeholders at the table to help us make informed decisions. That's why you were invited to serve, and we are grateful for your rich contributions to the discussion. The input we received at these meetings is being synthesized and analyzed right now. We'll form the basis of our guidance document that will be presented to the Board of Regents at our meeting in July. The document will help guide schools and school districts as a plan for the safe reopening of their schools. You can find the complete information of the Task Force on the state website. Thank you again for your service to our schools and communities in our state. I hope you have a safe, healthy, and relaxing summer." Not sure about that part. "Sincerely, and best regards, Betty Rosa, Chancellor."
All right. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
And then we have our minutes for Personnel and Structural and Service Committee, and then our upcoming events, of course, is our next board meeting, which is the 21st at 5:30. Now, we need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of property acquisition, contract negotiations, and litigation. Motion by Carrie, second by Sue. All in favor? Aye. Thumbs up by Meg. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carried.
We will not be returning, I think, for action tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
So, Dr. Beeler, Mrs. Magiera, and Dr. McCune can stay on. Let's take perhaps a five-minute biologic break. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.
Thank you. Stay safe.